Welcome back, everybody. This is episode 12 of the Progressive Democrats of Howard County Podcast. Uh, we're taking a little bit of a break, uh, with our Coco for us slate, uh, mini-series where we interview, uh, candidates on that slate for Democratic Central Committee, here and myself included. Um, and we, uh, are now going to be talking to, um, a, a former candidate for a different office. Um, again, I am, uh, one of your co-hosts and president of Progressive Democrats of Howard County, Jake Burdette, gonna pass it to my other co-host, Harry Hogg Gill, um, to also tell us a little bit about, uh, who we're interviewing today. So, hey, how you doing today, Harry?
Hey Jake, uh, hi, everybody. Um, so, uh, Jake, uh, as, as you know, and as our viewers know, um, PDHC Progressive Democrats of Howard County is concerned about openness, about transparency, uh, in government, about accountability. And, uh, it, it, it seems to be, uh, lacking, uh, you know, in, in county government. Um, there's zero coverage of, uh, uh, the, um, though that these, these, um, uh, I would say, uh, government transgressions, uh, in the news, uh, local news. Um, and, uh, you know, when, when government, when county government ignores, uh, calls for transparency, um, there's, there's no recourse, uh, uh, in, in this county, and so, uh, life goes on. Uh, so, um, we, one way to, in, one way to illustrate or one way to inform the public about examples of, um, lack of transparency and openness is, uh, by talking to someone who, uh, was involved in, in that kind of, uh, uh, fight, um, and, um, and so today, uh, Jake, so, uh, we, um, we invited, um, uh, Alan, uh, Dyer. Uh, so Alan, uh, was a Board of Education, uh, member, uh, and he will tell us a little bit more about, about that, about his experience and the, uh, when he was elected, so on and so forth. But for purposes of setting the stage, the, um, the, the context of this interview is the issue, the issues that he dealt with when he was in the Board of Education and, um, and, uh, ensuing, um, uh, um, I, I would say saga, uh, that, that, uh, uh, that he, that he was involved in. So, uh, without further ado, uh, I'll, I'll like to introduce, um, Alan. Uh, welcome to our podcast, Alan.
Thank you, Harry. What would you like, where would you like for me to start?
So tell us a little bit about, uh, um, yourself in terms of, uh, where, where you, um, how you started in, in, your, your involvement in local issues, getting elected to Board of Education, when that occurred, then, uh, the, the issues that you, that you began observing as you joined the Board of Education, uh, and what ensued after that?
Uh, the issues were there before I was elected to the board. I knew the issues were there. Uh, when I first, uh, got involved with, uh, uh, local, uh, school politics, if you, if you will, uh, when my son entered high school, I got active in the River Hill Boosters Club. And, uh, this was, uh, see nineteen, nineteen ninety-six, I think he, he started at River Hill. Now, that was an early period, relatively early period in, uh, internet use. And email, uh, was becoming, uh, a very common, uh, item that was available to, you know, to most people in Howard County. So, uh, I, my wife and I, uh, in, in a, uh, another, uh, well, first just my wife and I started passing around, uh, 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 signup list for emails. You know, asking for emails at, uh, the back to school night or the welcome school, you know, the early, you know, before we started River Hill, actually, uh, the first year, uh, we passed around, uh, and collected email addresses. And as a result, we had an active, uh, list server, Howard, uh, not Howard, excuse me, River Hill, uh, email register, uh, which a lot of students, parents and teachers were on. And, uh, so we were, we were finding that at that time, the administrators, the school administrators were also discovering the benefits of operating, uh, via email. So, we felt that by concentrating on the technology that is, was available, uh, to the community, it would, it would allow all of the parents, all of the students, all the teachers to have better communications via email. And we ended up with some, you know, pretty, pretty wild discussions. Uh, and, uh, so that's where I started getting involved with school politics and I, and I went on to, uh, to run a number of times, uh, for the board after, after I had first sued them once, or actually, I did not sue the board until after the first time that I ran, I remember now, because it was during the election campaign that I found out that the board basically had meetings, and then they had the meeting that was televised. Uh, it was, uh, so I, I sued them for Open Meetings Act. Yeah, it took a couple of years. Finally got down, got all the evidence in, and, uh, the judge, uh, uh, you know, after, after two years, it was, it was two years into the case. And, uh, I think we proved pretty clearly, uh, that the Open Meetings Act had been violated, and the judge looked and said, "Well, I'm gonna have to think about this." And so I came back and he said, "Well, it is my ruling that Mr. Dyer does not have standing to sue under the Open Meetings Act." Uh, that was somewhat of a surprise since it, it, it appears to say that anyone that's adversely affected can, can sue under the Open Meetings Act. And, uh, there was a whole rabbit hole of, of, of reasoning that was necessary in order to take that stance, but he took it. It was a bad stance, and, uh, give Liz Bobo some credit. Uh, she, uh, worked up, uh, a, a, uh, a res, a, a bill, uh, an amendment to the Open Meetings Act that removed one word from the Open Meetings Act, that being the affected. So instead of being affected, which does not mean affected, by the way, legally, but that word and what it means is not a consideration because it's just every person has standing. And that, that's just sort of the beginning. And, and so I, I, when I, when I was elected to the board, uh, the people that voted for me knew what I wanted to do. I wanted to open the board up, and I did my damnedest to do that. Uh, I, uh, I, uh, you know, I, I tried to hold them to task for destroying emails without proper authorization. Uh, uh, I, I tried to hold them to task for, uh, having meetings that were not properly announced. It, uh, so as time went on, uh, the board members and the county council, especially the county council, got more and more concerned. Now, the Board of Education has serious problems with, uh, complying with the Board of Education, but that's baby stuff compared to the county council. The county council is, basically, the Open Meetings Act is used to its maximum extent to embarrass the name of open meetings by Maryland county, Maryland government officials and local county officials. Uh, it's a joke. Uh, you have a fantastic, uh, prologue into the Open Meetings Act saying what is, what should be and the way government should be. Then you get to the definitions. And basically, the Open Meetings Act doesn't apply to, boom, 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 boom. So, all of the, all of the, uh, all of the people that you wanna have operating in the open are exempt from the Open Meetings Act from the get-go. And then you have, well, if you need, when you're having a meeting, if you have something really special, uh, there's ten ways that you can close it. And, uh, one of those ways is, uh, getting legal counsel. So, and that includes getting legal counsel from attorneys who get their money from our taxes. There was a, uh, College Park, College Park actually, and I, I don't know whether this is still true, but College Park had in their, uh, charter that meetings could not be closed for, for, uh, legal counsel purposes. In other words, all the legal advice that, uh, uh, the Board of Education or the county council received from government attorneys was open advice available to all. And that, uh, uh, that's so different than the rest, rest of the, uh, rest of the state. And I'm not sure it's that way in College Park anymore, but that power is there. Your local officials do not have to close these damn meetings. They're doing it because they have the power.
And So Alan, uh, on the Open, uh, Meetings Act, uh, uh, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, I, I mean, I'm familiar with the idea of the Open Meetings Act, but in terms of, uh, so does the state legislature say who, you know, who is exempt, you know, is it written in state law? Or does the count, does this, does the county, does county government or the county legislature, can it give, you know, can it say, you know, can it change the law or, you know, to, um, to allow for all meetings to be open, uh, or does it need to be done through, uh, a charter amendment?
Well, I would think that through a charter amendment is your best way to get a local, uh, government into with open meetings, the idea of the open meetings. You do not want compliance with the Open Meetings Act, with the Maryland Open Meetings Act, because it's meaningless. But if you want to have open meetings, you can, you can be more strict as a county. Uh, but you can't be looser. In other words, you can't do something that's more, more free, move for secret meetings, but if you tighten up on the restrictions, uh, or, uh, what is allowed to, to, to be done, conduct, you know, in closed meetings, you can do that by your charter. Yes.
So, uh, one of the, um, I would, I'll describe them as complaints, uh, that were made against you was that, um, you were quote-unquote violating, you know, confidential, you know, confidential information or confidentiality agreements, or, and so on and so forth. Uh, now, I, um, my experience in this county has been that usually when, when members of a board or members of a committee resist having discussions in the open, it's usually, it's, you know, it's because they're concerned about how it might make them look, or might, uh, i- i- about, they're concerned about how the information might affect public opinion. That's what I have seen. Um, okay, um, and, and it's up to you whether you wanna talk about the, you know, the, the, the nature of the information, but, uh, we, what was the, you know, so first of all, okay, you know, maybe talk about who was on the board with you, and who disagreed with your, uh, with your push to open things up? And the nature of those things that you wanted to open, if you wanted to talk about that too. Does that make sense?
Uh, I'm not interested in talking about the personalities. This, this has never been a personality thing for me. And, uh, uh, so I, I, I don't see that there's much to be gained from looking at whether or not a certain person, uh, ten, fifteen years ago, uh, you know, was unenlightened, so to speak. Uh, the, I, I am concerned about the way the government operates. And I don't think it's operating very well right now. But I, I have to, I have to also confess, I don't think Maryland, either the state, state or the colony, has ever been anything like an open government. That's not the tradition in this, in this, in this state. Uh, it's, it's amazing how the corruption, and it is corruption, whether it's a legal corruption or whether it's a moral corruption. You're, you're selling out the government. The elected officials are selling us out, but, but the reason they can get away with it is because the citizens, that's us, the voters, go along with it. And everyone says, "We can't change it. What are we going to do?" You tried to change it, you got impeached. Well, that was a great thing, as far as I'm concerned. That was an excellent outcome to actually be acknowledged for the fact that I was willing to operate in the open.
Yeah, so, uh, on that, uh, note, Alan, um, cause I think, you know, there's a sort of a gap between, you know, the, the narrative that we've talked about so far of you getting elected and, you know, making a lot of noise, I would say, in, in, uh, in the, in the best way possible about bringing transparency to the Board of Education, and then, you know, fast forward, yeah, they, they, they impeach you, um, after you do not get reelected. But, you know, sometime between, um, when you're elected and when you get impeached, or even before you get elected.
Okay.
Um, I'm ki, I'm curious, as somebody like yourself who clearly is not afraid to boldly and loudly say how you feel and what the blatant flaws in the county government are, and, you know, I like to think Harry and I and Progressive Democrats of Howard County, we're kind of the same way. And, you know, I, I know some of the backlash that I've gotten when I tried to, you know, raise the, the alarm, and it's different when you're an elected official and you're raising the alarm, because then you really have a loud megaphone. So if you could talk a little bit about, you know, what was some of the backlash, um, including but not limited to, um, you know, yeah, the, the impeachment, but what was some of the backlash that, that you saw from either the media, um, the, the public, um, your fellow colleagues and elected Board of Education members? Like what were the things done to sort of try to keep you in line and shut you up? Whether that was social alienation, um, character assassination attempts, the, uh, you know, the impeachment, you know, what did you, what, what did they sort of throw at you to kind of try to discourage you and disc, and make an example out of you to make it so other people don't follow your lead?
Well, I, I think the idea was to attempt to portray my efforts to rely on the courts as being litigious. And they, and they were saying, "You're on the board, you can't sue the board." Well, the truth matter is, is that if you're on the board, you're responsible for all the actions of all those members. And if they're violating the law and you don't say something, you're, you're in trouble too. And the problem is that it doesn't take long, it doesn't take long after your election before you're falling for that. So, uh, I mean, I thought, and I hate to say this to you as a, uh, potential law student. Uh, I went to, I went to law school because, uh, when I was in high school and I was publishing a newsletter, you know, I got, I got kicked out to another school. And, uh, they wouldn't listen to me that it was a, a, a freedom of speech, uh, you know, uh, uh, a freedom of seat, uh, speech right. And, uh, my friends got together, put, put, to put a little bit of money together and hired an ACLU attorney in Seattle, and he had to make a phone call, one phone call. He said the same thing I did, and I was back in the school. They said, "Damn, that's what I wanna be, an attorney." Uh, that doesn't count here in Maryland. I'm surprised at how little impact, uh, uh, an attorney that is not in line makes. So, uh, the, um, I urge you to think big. Don't spend so much time on little stuff that you're using up your life. Every day you have is valuable. And when you're my age, you'll really know that every day is valuable. So I urge you to aim high as far as making the system better. Accountability is a bare minimum.
Yeah, well.
They're not, they're, they're not accountable. I, I was not impeached by the people. I was impeached by the board members that I was exposing. So
Yeah. Uh, uh, absolutely, and I, I definitely take that advice to heart, and, you know, I have sort of a, a, a spin-off question of, you know, and I, I have a similar story. We can, you know, talk off air of, you know, what inspired me to, to go in, to pursue law and, you know, how sort of the law was abused against me by a person and authority, and I sort of learned, you know, in, in that instance, it was the state prosecutor, but I guess in your instance, uh, not so much with, uh, you know, you getting, you know, kicked out of your school for publishing things that, critical things that your school didn't like, but, um, in terms of, you know, how, uh, the, you know, your, your legal complaints against the Board of Education was filed, you know, you, you have the law and you expect, you know, the court and the legal system to, to operate as we're told that it operates, as in, in a fair and just manner, and that if, if a viol, if something's in a violation of the law, and if you follow the legal process and legal procedure and file your lawsuit, you, you jump through all the hoops, that justice will prevail, you know, that's sort of what we're told, but in your instance, um, the judge.
I think that's true in some states.
I, in, in some states and some, in some jurisdictions, but yeah, certainly, um, you know, y- you know, not what I've seen in Maryland or in some instances in, in Howard County, but, um, so to, to touch specifically on the courts, which is supposed to be sort of a check and a balance, uh, on the other branches of government. So, um, you know, I don't know why that judge in your instance made that bad ruling as, as you described it, but, um, you know, what sort of pressures do you think that the judges in Maryland or Howard County have to not view things objectively and not do things the way that they do them in those other states that you describe, where you think that it is more fair, and, and, and sort of what steps do you think we could take to have the judicial branch more independent, whether that be abolishing judicial elections, which we have here, but I don't know if all states do, but, you know, how, how do you think we can sort of address that problem? Why do you think it exists in this county and state?
Because that is the history of Maryland. You know, there's no good news there. If you go back to Maryland history, and, and it's kind of hard to even actually get access to Maryland history. Uh, they're, they're so busy destroying the records. There's, if you, if there's any possible problem that you can have between religions, we've had it in Maryland. I mean, we have a fantastically long record of, of vicious, bitter fights between various religions. Now, there is one advantage that you get from that, from all of those fights over the years. You get a valid oath. And that took a lot of work. It took two trips to the Supreme Court to get a legally constitutional oath of office in Maryland. So, once you have an oath, then you can excuse me, then the oath combined with a statement, uh, under oath, subject to perjury. Uh, that's the only key you have to accountability. And, and, and the, the, the good people of Maryland in the past have supported attorneys that have taken those cases up to the Supreme Court to make sure that people of a, of various religious denominations are not banned from owning property. Not just not voting, but not even, you can't even own property at times in Maryland. Uh, uh, and, and you need to recognize, recognize that, that history. And it's, it's interesting history, and I, just a lot of real, really good people, you know, were involved, but things go, no matter how good your people are, uh, if you, if you have a sloppy, a sloppy process of, of, of protecting religious freedom and freedom of speech, uh, you're, you're always going to have problems. So, that's what, I think that's where you need to start. My concern, for example, here in Howard County, is tomorrow, they're going to be, you know, taking testimony for rewrite of, uh, of the, uh, regulations for doing, uh, housing, uh, housing appeals or zoning appeals. And there is built into there's built into, uh, uh, Howard County, uh, uh, code an oath that you have to take if you're going to provide testimony. That sounds good, doesn't it? Not the same oath you'd take in a judge, in a, in a courtroom, though. The oath in Howard County, when you're, when you're giving testimony about why you're doing this, or what you did, and, and who you paid, you agree to say nothing but the truth. Oh, that sure sounds good. But nothing about the whole truth and nothing but the truth. That's the number one start. If you can't correct that oath, why change anything?
So, uh, Alan, you, uh, you mentioned, um, earlier about uh, thinking big, uh, and not, you know, wasting time on the minutia of things, and I certainly, um, uh, uh, you know, agree with that. Um, I can tell you, for example, um, you know, one of what, in, in, you know, in this, in this county, and I suspect it's the case in many other counties and many other local jurisdictions, that, um, community activists, um, you know, who, um, let's think, let's focus in Howard County, you know, you have community activists who work closely with elected officials. And, you know, they get, they work to get things done, uh, and, you know, they're spending a lot of their free time doing that. And on, in many cases, not, you know, not as a criticism of the community activists, I'll, it's just the nature of how things are done is, in many cases, those things end up falling short in that they are very, very incremental. Sometimes it's taking, it's like taking you know, one step forward, two steps back. Which, you know, I, I, you know, it's, you know, I, it really, to me, it really, it really is frustrating to see that, you know, when you see, you know, good people not end up, you know, good people spending so much energy, you know, and, you know, with, with, with that, with that kind of outcome. The, the, the part the, the reason I mention that is when, you know, when you say think big, the, the challenge is there are, you know, the people, there are, a lot, there are a lot of people who think big. And there are a lot of people who use that thinking to make proposals. But just like, you know, what happened to you, it, it either gets ignored or the person gets punished. Right? And that's, you know, uh, you may not, you know, we may not have, we may not have the answer to that, but I just wanted to get your thoughts on that because, you know, Howard County is to a very, to a huge extent, it's, you know, it relies on, on group think. Anybody who's not in that group think is not, you know, it's just, you know, that's, 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 that's how it works. And so how do you ensure you know, that, you know, what we stand, what PDHC stands for, for example, in terms of, you know, not being, not cultivating group think, you know, making sure that different ideas are out there and discussed. How do you ensure that, you know, that is fostered in a broader way in the county?
First off, you're doing exactly what I think you should be doing right now. You're using the technology that's available to try and support the idea of the constitution. And that's a, that's, that's, that's a very worthy thing. And you will get ideas popping around and, and discussion and everything and you, and you'll get communities, you're going the right direction. I believe. I believe that technology will be used, so you may as well use some of it well. Cause you know, you know how many cameras are watching you every day? And being, and you're being recognized by computers. You know? Except for the fact that I just, I'm stunned at that. You know? They can watch me as long as they want to. But it's a golly. I mean, nineteen eighty-four is a fairy tale now. You know, those were the good old days.
My question is, you know, you talk about the lack of transparency in Howard County in general, but also from your time on the Board of Education, lack of transparency in Board of Education, violation of the Open Meetings Act, or routine violations of the Open Meetings Act. You, you vaguely referenced corruption earlier. So I guess my, my question is, you know, you say they have the meeting where they really talk about the details in private, and then they have the public meeting where they just, you know, say, give the finished version, I guess, and not the secret detail. So my question is, what are those secrets and what are those details that the Board of Education and, and county government is trying to keep out in the eyes of the public? What, you know, at the national level, I know what the corruption centers around. It's a, you know, the, the health insurance company is the war machine, whatnot, but in Howard County, you know, what are these dirty secrets? What are the skeletons in the closet? What, at least what industries is, is really behind a lot of the corruption and unethical behavior in the county?
Well, first, I think before we can pass judgment on who's, who's causing the problems or who's, what's problematic, we have to have disclosure. Without disclosure, you can't be rational. Now, that, there's, there's a political plus side there though. That means that every issue that you come up with as a political advisor, you can push both sides. Because no one trusts either side to do anything. You know, they're all going to be operating in secret. So you just have, you know, it has to happen. We've, we've mentioned Open Meetings Act, which is a joke. The Maryland Open Meetings Act truly is a joke. But there is something that is, got a little bit more muscle to it, and that's the PIA, the Public Information Act. Now, if you take the Public Information Act and combine it with the what you know as a, as a young person growing up in this time period, technology wise, you can take the Public Information Act and say, why do I have to identify something that I want to see? And then have to pay you to give it to me? You don't have to do that. There was a reason for that. There wasn't any alternative back, back in the Watergate days. But this, this isn't Watergate days. This is everyone has a printing press. Everyone that has a telephone, a cell phone, has a printing press. We have tremendous capabilities with bandwidth that is basically unlimited, really. No scarcity there. Everything the government does should be online. If it's not classified for military purposes, everything should be there online. And if you have something that you're worried about for, for tactical purposes, say you're worried about someone, you know, I guess the classic example is, is the trains. The trains that we build here in Howard County, we build schools right next to trains. Gosh, we're so enlightened. Those trains, you have no idea what they are carrying ever. As a citizen, you should certainly get a chance to know all the traffic that went through past your school. Now, you don't have to know it right now. Because if you're worried about safety, I can understand. I can understand, you know, wanting to avoid publicizing, carrying things that are easily sabotaged, you know, on a train. But after the trains have delivered their goods, you can even wait a week. Let the parents know. Let the students know. As soon as you put schools next to trains, you have an obligation to let people know things. Not just to keep them quiet and hope that the train's never going to derail, especially like in Ellicott City. The
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, okay, I'll, I'll shut up. Just my, my final comment. It would be so functional, economical to take all of the documents that we're creating and put them in a accessible database so that people could go see what they want to see.
Yeah, I, I think you know, the, the thrust of this whole, you know, discussion, I think is, you know, the elected officials, many of them have forgotten who they represent. There, when, when we talk about stakeholder, stakeholders in this process and this government, the voter is essentially just, you know, an afterthought, whereas the voter should, should be, you know, the main stakeholder from, you know, constitutional government, that's, you know, that is the main stakeholder. But given the, you know, given how, at least, you know, how it's it is structured, how it's been functioning so far, you know, it's essentially, you know, the, you have, you have the corporations and making sure that the corporations run smoothly and everything else adjusts to, to that. And you know, when you mentioned the trains and, you know, the schools built next to the trains, you know, that's what, you know, that's the thought that, that, you know, that came, that came to mind. And if, 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 if you don't mind, I, I want to go back to something that you mentioned about what's, so today is May thirty-first. On June first, the zoning board will be, will, will, will hold a hearing on amending the rules of procedure, which is the sort of, which is the, the rules for how the, the board runs its public hearing. And one thing you mentioned was the oath, addressing the oath taken before testimony. Can you think of, you know, other issues that, that, you know, that, that come to mind? You know, in terms of what some of the glaring issues that need to be addressed by the zoning board?
Well, I I don't think it's just issues that have to be addressed by the zoning board. I guess, I, I mean, I think that is the zoning board, the county councilors, you know, just let's not talk about that particular way of making us look like third world. What you need to do as a citizen is demand your right to the legal advice that is being given to your government officials. There's no excuse for any lawyer to be giving advice to elected officials that isn't available to every voter. And I want to stop back here for a second here. I, and I, I don't want to be too critical, but I said voter, I didn't say stakeholder, did I? Damn, I'm sure I forgot to read the constitution. It must be in there somewhere about us stakeholders. The corporations
Touche.
Are not voters. And that's who the politicians are responsible to, the voters, not the stakeholders.
Yeah, absolutely. And I, I think the, the, the focus that we like to have at the local level, you know, I'm curious if you agree with us is, you know, yeah, it's, it's corporations being represented and buying off our government, but at the local level, it's developers mainly specifically are, you know, the people, those are the people who have an interest in controlling the zoning regulations and
Well, then maybe you should ban donations from those developers to politicians.
I'm with you. I believe Prince George's County did something like that for a couple of years and it was, I mean, it wasn't a silver bullet, but it was effective enough to the point where I think the developers managed to get it repealed after only like two or three years. So definitely 100%. We need something like that in Howard County. I'm gonna give a quick plug for, I don't know if you're familiar with this, Alan, but Progressive Democrats, Howard County, a couple of other groups, we have a no developer, Howard County No Developer Donation Campaign pledge that ten candidates have signed, running for different local offices, plus seventeen or eighteen or nineteen Democratic Central Committee candidates. So that is a pledge. It's not a law. We, I agree with you. We do need a law. And then, and last question, Alan, before we close out is, you know, it sounds like you really got kind of thrown under the bus by your fellow Board of Education members. And I'm, I'm curious, like the, the thing that you say that you were advocating for, well, I guess there's a couple of things, but at least one of them of, you know, pushing for something as simple as transparency and to, to simply follow the law, follow the Open Meetings Act as should be expected. And, you know, have your discussions and your votes in, 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 in public. And yet this was met with a lot of resistance to the point where your fellow board members, as you said, tried to impeach you. And now I don't know if this was literally every single other member except you voted to impeach you, or if you had one or two allies, but my question is, how come, what, what are the, the forces that prevent, prevented your other board members from doing the
honest thing, you know, what keeps so many elected officials from from stepping out of line and, and doing the, the thing that requires integrity that, that you did?
Well, there's a shadow government for local governments and for local boards of education. They're called, for, on the education side is called MAB, Maryland Association of Boards of Education. It is not a public entity, you know, or it does not serve, it's, it's not something set up by Maryland law. It's, but all board members pretty much belong to it. Because the board in the various counties pay the dues for membership with school dollars. And as soon as you get elected to the Board of Education, the first thing that happens is you get grouped with other newly elected board members and you get set down for two days of training or propaganda, whatever you want to call it, it's all about how you're supposed to behave. And you're not supposed to behave like I do. Of course, I mean, that's a little extreme, I suppose, but the but you're, you're law, you led down the path. You're told that as a board member, you don't have any power. What you've got to do is you've got to protect the reputation of, of, of everything that's going on because everyone's doing such a great job. And it's, it's indoctrination. So you go along, just like you're going along with the Democratic Party.
Yeah, now it sounds like the, the group think that Yuri was, was describing earlier.
It is exactly that. You've got to all be in together. If you're gonna, if you're gonna violate the Open Meetings Act, you've got to do it all together.
Yeah. And I, I, when I was a campaign manager for a Board of Education campaign in 2020, I definitely heard from a lot of establishment quote unquote advisors, I heard that same line of, oh yeah, Board of Education, they don't have the power to, to do it, you know, it's all, they, they don't control the budget and, you know, they, they just, they can just recommend stuff to the county council.
They can tell, they can tell the county council where to build a school. That's a hell of a lot of power. They have the right to condemn property. And they're gutless. They're not willing to do it. They'd rather cite new schools right next to the railroad tracks. Cause they, they were getting a good deal from someone.
Yeah. Well, Alan certainly learned a lot from you. Thank you for, for sharing. I wish we had a little bit more time because I feel like we're only at the, the tip of the iceberg here.
It's been a lot of, it's been a lot of, a lot of fun. And, you know, we can talk elsewhere sometime and whatever, but just please don't sell your life so cheaply. Every day you spend supporting a, an operation that shouldn't be supported, that's your loss. And it's all our loss too.
Yeah, no, duly noted. And yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll see what this, what this project, what results it can manage to muster up, but yeah, certainly I'm always open to, to trying new approaches and, you know, we'll, we'll see if, if law school is worthwhile, but
May I say one thing in closing?
Yes, yes.
I recommend everyone support rank order voting. Because only then will there ever be a chance for that it be a functional third party in this country. And if you look back at the history of this country, you'll see how very, very dependent our history has been on third parties. And if you look back at the history of this country, you'll see how very, very dependent our history has been on third parties. My closing
Yeah. Absolutely, absolutely. Rank choice voting, Progressive Democrats of Howard County and the Hoco for Us slate for Democratic Central Committee, both very strong supporters of ranked choice voting. Definitely, yeah, we need to give an even playing field for for third parties and break the the two-party duopoly that's gotten us to this point, which is not a great point.
Not a great point at all. I think since two thousand sixteen, neither major party can claim to be functional.
Yeah, I I think it happened a long time before then.
Two thousand sixteen.
Now it's obvious.
That was it.
No, no denying it now. But yeah, well, Jerry, any any last, any last words before we before we close out here?
Yes, I want to try to temper my words a little bit because I do not want to make like I'm discouraging anyone from being active in whatever way they want to be active. So it's it's your world now. You know? And
Yeah.
and you're going to have a lot of very difficult things that you're going to be dealing with. And what we're looking at right now today is 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 really small potatoes. And you will, you will live to be at active participants in major decisions that this country is going to have to make.
Yeah, Alan, I totally agree with that. I I don't think none of us can even fathom the the level of complex complexity. And, you know, the the degree of the problems that that are coming, you know, already we have, we're, you know, we're facing many of them. And, you know, I I think, you know, like you said, you know, we got, you know, we got to think big and we need to, you know, we, people have a choice, you know, you have a choice to either, you know, fall in line and take very incremental steps to disaster. Or you, you know, take matters in your own, you know, into your own hands and, you know, try to make, you know, bold changes. And I think, you know, some of the proposals, you know, make requiring the, you know, legitimate oaths, administer, admin, administering legitimate oaths during, you know, during testimony, that's, you know, that's good. You know, demanding access to, you know, to legal advice that the that your government receives, you know, that's another one. Making all information public, especially at this time and age, making sure that all, you know, any relevant government document that is not classified for legitimate national security issues, because the concept of national, not just not, I mean, even locally, for legitimate security issues, because these things get distorted too, that's that's important. And also, of course, you know, make, you know, giving some teeth to the Open Meetings Act. I think those are really good, you know, suggestions. You know, and, you know, things that we should all be working toward, you know, goals that we should be all all be working toward. And thank you for your time to talk to us today. And I think and yeah, thank you. And Jake, I'll let you close out.
Yeah, thank you to Alan. Thank you to Hury. This has been episode twelve of the Progressive Democrats of Howard County podcast. Please subscribe to us on YouTube. Consider becoming a dues paying member. Sign up for our email list. You could do all of this on our Linktree, including following us on social media, link tr dot e e slash hoco progressives. Again, please consider becoming a member and we will see you all for episode thirteen. Thank you everybody.